Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for those who have passed away in our community. Roll call please.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Gahn.
Here.
Mr. Rexler.
Here. Dispersed with reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, check received in the amount of $500 from Harrison House Personal Care Home, which is payment in lieu of taxes for the city of Scranton.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3B, tax assessor's results report for hearing date held October 4, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3C, controller's report for month ending September 30, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3D, minutes of the Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission meeting, held August 16, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3E, minutes of the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting, held September 20, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3F, minutes of the Scranton Police Pension Commission meeting, held September 20, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3G, minutes of the composite pension board meeting, held September 20, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed.
3H, agenda for the non-uniform municipal pension board meeting, held October 18, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
Yes, I have two announcements to make. The first announcement is Hallick's Heroes. This is a community fundraiser. It's going to be taking place Saturday, November 18th, from 6 o'clock to 10 o'clock at the FOP Lodge on 401 Railroad Avenue in Scranton. This is, it's a very tragic event that happened to Officer Chris Hallick. He was 33-year-old Scranton police officer, diagnosed with aggressive and rare type of leukemia, AML-FT3. He has a wife and a brand-new newborn baby, boy, and he's fighting very hard for them, and we should grab his back and be fighting hard for him and get out and support him and his family in his time of need. It's $15 per person, which will include food and beverages, and like a lot of the raffles, there'll be baskets and 50/50, t-shirts and bracelets, and we should go show the support for somebody who goes out there on a daily basis and protects people like us so we can do what we could. So again, let's get out there and support Chris. November 18th, 6 o'clock to 10 o'clock, and that's going to be at the Scranton Dunmore FOP Lodge, 401 Railroad Avenue. And my second announcement is, as part of the National Prescription Doug Takeback Day on October 28th, the Scranton Police Department is participating to provide a convenient, safe, and responsible means of disposing of prescription drugs. Unused or expired prescription medications may be brought to Police Headquarters, 100 South Washington Avenue, on October 28th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. For a full list of participating locations, you can visit takebackday.dea.gov. Thank you.
Just before anyone goes, if anyone in the gallery is going to have a conversation, could you please take it out in the hall? It's quite distracting to our stenographer. If you're having a conversation, could you please take it out in the hall? It's distracting to the stenographer. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have two. First, the 7th Annual Bonfire at the Iron Furnaces will take place this Saturday, October 21st, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. at the historic Scranton Iron Furnaces. The bonfire being lit at 8:00 p.m. Tickets for the event include admission to the festival and $5 in bonfire bucks to use towards food, beverage, and activities. Tickets are $15 online and $20 at the gate. Entrance to the festival is free for children 12 and under. Also, the Chalkaholic Frolic will be held this Sunday, October 22nd, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at the Scranton Cultural Center. Tickets are $35 and benefit United neighborhood centers programs for adult literacy and ESL education. For more information, you can call 346-0759.
Yes, and I have one. Our city comptroller, Roseanne Novembreno, who has done an awful lot for the city in regards to community service and public service over the years, needs our help. Her daughter, Elaine Novembreno-Hug, has undergone a lung transplant with complications. They're having a benefit for her to raise money at Kill Coins on South Main Avenue in West Scranton. October 22nd, which is this Sunday, from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Donation is $10. All donations will be gratefully appreciated. Thank you.
The city's recycling department has purchased bags for the sole use of yard waste and leaves. Bags are available for pickup at the DPW Building, 101 Poplar Street, beginning Monday, October 30th. Pickup schedule for Mondays and Thursdays for the bags is 2 to 5, and on Wednesdays from 2 to 7. There is no charge for the bags, and proof of residency is required. Your yard waste and leaves placed in these bags will be recycled. Please do not rake leaves to the curb. The vacuum truck is going to be used intermittently as conditions permit. Basically, they're going to be used to take leaves from the street that blow there or by storm drains. Placing leaves in the bags is the best way to maximize our recycling efforts. If you do use normal trash bags and you put them out before that week, they will be collected as trash. So if we want it, this is an attempt to get our recycling program started for leaves. The DPW has purchased approximately 20,000 bags for recycling. And this is our first effort to have a recycling program for leaves, so your cooperation is requested. Any questions you may have, please call 570-348-4165. Also, next Thursday, October 26th, at 6:30 p.m., council will present a proclamation to the Naughton family, naming the city clerk's office as the Frank J. Naughton City Clerk's Office. We invite all who have worked with Mr. Naughton, including any present or past elected officials, to join us in honoring Mr. Naughton on this special evening.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Joan Hoda-Wannitz.
Joan Hoda-Wannitz, Grant resident, taxpayer. We're down to 19 days until the general election on November 7th. I hope that everybody listening to this broadcast understands that next Wednesday night, that's October 25th, at 6:00 p.m., the University of Scranton's Lehee Hall, that's on Linden Street, second floor, Mayor Courtright and Jim Mulligan will debate their positions for mayor. And I just hope that anybody who can possibly go there will go. This is your opportunity to ask both candidates questions and to hear their replies. I certainly hope that ECTV will be broadcasting that live, or at least tape it and then show it several times before the election. And speaking of the election, it'd be nice to see the results of the Arcatus study on stormwater management. Is there any possibility that might be forthcoming?
There is supposed to be, from what I understand, a meeting held. We did get an update between the administration, members of Arcatus, and Pennsylvania American Water. As for a date for the study, I don't know that yet.
Okay, because that only, you know, is information we should have as we prepare for the election, but it also ought to affect your budget planning process and the administration's budget planning process. I don't know how they can prepare a budget for next year without that kind of information, but we'll see what they do. I have in my hand here $1, which I will gladly give to anybody who will give me a copy of the updated Knowles Insurance List. Any takers?
As far as I'm concerned, we didn't get that yet, Mrs. Reed, correct? The insurance list?
No, we got the master list. The business administrator gave it to the cabinet heads to review their responsibilities within the list, and we have not received it back from them.
That's a long time ago.
Yes, it is.
Well, you realize that the insurance policy is going to come up for renewal in March, and we won't have seen the list. Okay, that's the way things are done. And I understand, I didn't go to the pension board meetings yesterday because I went to the county board meetings, but I understand they have not yet decided to select an independent medical examination coordinator yet. Is that true?
That's true.
So basically, any proceeds from the sewer sale are still sitting in limbo, have not flowed to the pension plans.
That's true.
I wonder what the current figure is, had that money flowed long ago, like the beginning of the year, what they would have made off of the stock market. But those are just unrealized gains. Okey-dokey. Speaking of the budget, have you any kind of timeline for when you receive the proposed 2018 budget so that the public also can get a look at it?
Yeah, to the best of my understanding, it'll follow the dates as established by the Home Rule Charter, all the dates.
Which is?
Yes.
When will we see it?
I think we're getting it the week of the 16th.
November 16th?
November 15th, I'm sorry.
November 15th?
15th.
Okay, and it has to be passed within 30 days?
Yep.
Okay. Looking forward to that. Like I said, a lot of questions. I'm wondering how they're coming up with their numbers. And I saw in the paper Judge Gibbons' decision not to drop the lawsuit on the Act 511 taxes. All those pending lawsuits, they're all potential landmines for not just the 2018 budget, but the financial welfare of the city as a whole. And then I'm very worried about the school district, because you hold hands with the school district. You're one city, okay? And if state has to come in and take them over, that will impact your credit rating. So we should see what happens there. I don't know if you've ever been to the Library Express at the marketplace at Steamtown. If you go in there, you will see on the wall all these papier-mâché masks. Those masks were made by the residents of the Juvenile Detection Center, part of the county prison system, in 2014. And on first Friday, November 3rd, those masks will be on display at St. Luke's Church on Wyoming Avenue from 5 to 9 p.m. And prisons had an awful lot of bad publicity. Hopefully, this will be one of the good stories that comes out of the things that can go well when they're properly run. Thank you.
Fay Francis, Scranton. I want to start off by talking about Dunmore City Council, where they are not going to use any money from the sewer sale to pay any bills for the borough because they want to wait and see what the lawsuit says. Because the lawsuit, the state law says that any money gained from an authority sale cannot be spent on any city government. It could only be spent on sewer-related matters. This council has chosen to pay bills, loans, millions of dollars to the banks that were owed by the city. Now, Mr. Rexler, when I talked to you on the phone, when you called me back, you told me that, I'm going to ask you something. You tell me you had to listen to what your solicitor menorah said, that he felt it was legal, so you went ahead and did it. Did you say you must listen to him, or you just decided to?
Wait, I trust in his opinion, yes.
So, but you don't have to listen to him?
No.
So you're as culpable then as...
I don't see it as culpability. Our interpretation is that we can spend the money. Dunmore's council interpretation is they don't want to spend the money.
Well, the law says that you cannot. How do you interpret it?
That's your interpretation. It hasn't been decided in court yet.
As far as these studies, the stormwater money, I find it very convenient that Mayor Courtright has decided to pave streets when all that money could have been used for stormwater. But you notice in the last four years, streets didn't get paved until two weeks, three weeks before the election. So you have to ask yourself, when somebody does something for themselves, really, versus for the people, they're not a good person. And he's not really doing it for the people. He's doing it to get votes. So everybody should understand his character. Mr. Rogan, I want to ask you something. Back in December of 2013, when the garbage fee was $178, it was on the council agenda that night to vote for it to be raised from $178 to $300. Did you vote to raise it from $178 to $300?
I believe that was in the budget that I voted for.
Pardon me?
I believe that was in that budget package that year that I did vote for.
I didn't ask you that. I said, did you vote yes or no for the garbage hike increase from $178 to $300?
Like I said, I believe I voted yes.
You believe? Well, I know you did, because it was in the agenda. It was on the minutes. Anybody who wants to look it up, December 13, 2013, Pat Rogan, Bob McGough, and Jack Galaskin voted to raise the garbage fee from $178 to $300. Had Mr. Rogan voted no, the garbage fee would still be at $178. And while he ran for election, all his flyers came out and said Pat Rogan voted against the garbage fee, when in reality, had he not voted for that increase, it would still be $178. So Pat Rogan is the reason why the garbage fee is $300 for anybody that wants to vote November 7th. Now, another thing, a woman has been in touch with you for six weeks with no response from you whatsoever about 20 or more trees that were cut behind, below the lookout of Elmhurst Boulevard? The city did that, right? Who ordered the city? Who gave the tree company permission to cut those trees?
That is something that I was looking into, and...
Six weeks.
I don't, I'm not sure if it was the city or Pendott that did that work, because there was simultaneous work going on at that time.
I'm pretty sure it was the city. And if that's the case, who pays for that? The taxpayers?
If it was the, either way, it's the taxpayers, whether it's the city or the people.
Yeah, but city taxes is more important right now than we're worried about Pendott. So how come you haven't gotten this information in six weeks? It was very simple, one phone call. To find out, you know the name of the tree company. How come you couldn't find out who ordered them to cut the trees?
I haven't had a reply, and it's not something council voted on. We didn't approve any legislation for that.
I just asked. You were asked by a constituent to find out who ordered these people to cut the trees, and you haven't answered that question. So why not? What are you trying to hide? Trying to protect Bill Courtright? Because he ordered these trees to be cut?
I haven't had the answer.
Do you realize that all the ice is going to be on Elmhurst Boulevard now this winter, and these trees are still sitting there? They're still sitting there. So how do you justify not answering a person for six weeks?
I haven't received an answer from the people who made that decision. That decision wasn't made by city council.
I didn't say it was. All you had to do was call the city, the city's office, and ask who ordered these trees cut. You're a city councilman. Mr. Evans has done many things for me through the city. He's made phone calls and gotten things done. How come you haven't been able to call somebody in the city administration and say, who ordered these trees to be cut?
Again, I've been looking, I looked into it. I haven't received an answer.
Six weeks. So what are you going to wait, till after the election? To protect Bill Courtright?
It has nothing to do with the mayor.
Well, then why can't you get any? Okay, then let's put it this way. You have an answer by next week, for sure, as to who hired this tree company and who's paying for it.
I can't promise you I'll have an answer, but I will promise you we'll send another correspondence out tomorrow morning.
Can't you pick up the phone instead of a letter?
Sure.
But I'm hoping, because I'll be on your back about this one.
Good evening, council. Gerard Hetman from the Lackawanna County Commissioner's Office. First, we'd like to thank, on behalf of the commissioners and our staff, city council, and your staff, for allowing us to use the council chamber for one of our public hearings on the issue of reassessment earlier this month. We had a great meeting here, very good crowd, about 20 to 25 constituents, I would say, and we had a very good series of interactions, great experience overall. So thank you to everyone who made that happen. We really appreciate being able to use the facility for such a good purpose. So thank you. On second note, this time of the year, as you are familiar, is the county's budget process. So the commissioners unveiled the tentative 2018 Lackawanna County General Fund budget on Friday, October 13th, as required by the county's Home Rule Charter. As proposed at the moment, the county's budget includes no tax increase. The millage rate will stay stable at the same rate it has for the last four budget cycles. And when we say that, of course, the Home Rule Charter requires a period of review when, after the budget is proposed. We have to have a series of four public budget hearings, which I'll describe in just a moment. The budget also has to go through two readings at two separate commissioners' meetings, similar to the way your legislation also has to go through readings. So when I say it's not final, it hasn't gone through the process yet. So it can be amended and changed under the county's Home Rule Charter, but as is proposed now, there is no millage increase or decrease from the current level. Some priorities in the budget process include funding debt reduction, funding economic development initiatives, and infrastructure improvements, and continued funding for the Lackawanna County library system. One of the hallmarks of the budget this year is savings in our 2017 debt refinancing package. Our revenue finance staff estimates that we've saved approximately $5 million from the current budget cycle to the one we're coming up into through debt refinancing. The county's 2018 budget will exceed the 2017 budget in terms of total final numbers due to many of the same challenges faced by the city government and other municipal governments, school districts, nonprofit entities, and private corporations and businesses, those being rising healthcare and pension costs, reduced state and federal funding, and collectively bargained wage and benefit increases. That brings the total line, bottom line, for the county's general fund budget as proposed for 2018 to $123,1265. The complete budget as proposed can be accessed in PDF format on our county website at www.lackawannacounty.org. In the format that we have it in, it's about 57 pages in length, and anyone can feel free to review that, check it out, go through any line item, and ask us any questions or bring any questions to the commissioner's office or the commissioners' meetings. The document you have in front of you is our annual budget message. This is another item required by the Home Rule Charter that we have to present a basic breakdown framework of the budget for public review. Now, I should note that we always do one comprehensive budget message, which is on the top two sheets there. But sometimes each commissioner also may choose to do his or her own version of the budget message if they have points they would like to emphasize to the public. So this year, Commissioner Cummings offered her own budget message, which is on the third page there. In that message, she encourages residents to explore the budget and come to the commissioners with any questions, or particularly suggestions, on how we can save money if they have anything. We're always open to that, of course, but she would like particular emphasis on that as we go through the budget process. And last but not least, our series of four public budget hearings, again required by the Home Rule Charter, will be held on Thursday, November 2nd. They are at 10:00 a.m. in the commissioners' conference room at the county administration building, 12:30 p.m. at the Moscow Borough Building, 3:00 p.m. at the Elephant Borough Building, and 6:00 p.m. at the Scott Township Building, better known as the Joe Terry Civic Center. So those are public meetings where the focus is strictly on the budget. We are open to any comments, questions, or suggestions at those, and of course, at the other commissioners' meetings as they come up. If anyone would like to speak to us in the office directly with comments, questions, or suggestions, they can call us at 570-963-6800. So we thank you, and that's all we have for this evening. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. Last week on the news and in the newspaper, it was announced that Mayor Courtright wants to renovate Crowley Park. And he was approached by Mark Seitzinger, Green Ridge resident, saying that it's contaminated there for stuff that was dumped. This happened in 2016. Why did Mr. Seitzinger wait till now to bring this up? Nothing but a political ploy to get his lying buddy Jim Mulligan elected mayor. And he wasn't satisfied, because Chief Graziano and DPW Director Gallagher were contacted about this, and they both said that the fill was not contaminated, it was clean fill. And also, the Friends of Crowley Park said it's clean fill. And if Mark Seitzinger is so concerned, why does he still let children play in there? They were playing there the day of the story, and he was letting them play. If it's so contaminated, why doesn't he stop people from playing there? It's nothing but a political ploy on his part. Next thing. Letter to the editor the other day from Phyllis Reinhardt, same person who wrote a letter two weeks ago, lying about Mayor Courtright raising the garbage fee at $300. And I'm just going to read the last sentence here. It says, "I sincerely believe a vote for Jim Mulligan on Election Day is a vote for the return of fiscal, transparent, accountable leadership in the mayor's office." Really? She's talking about a guy who made $250,000 as a sewer authorities lawyer, illegally took healthcare for his family from the sewer authority, and he didn't even pay his sewer bills while our sewer bills were rising. That's transparency and accountable leadership? I don't think so. What we don't need is another lying person from Green Ridge as our mayor. The last one put us in debt, and that's why we're in the trouble we are now. Lastly, I received something in the mail today. I will read part of it. It's about a lawsuit brought by candidate Jim Mulligan. Jim Mulligan, current candidate for election to be mayor of the city of Scranton, was at one time an owner of Anders Development Group Incorporated. His partners were attorneys Donald J. Fredrickson Jr. and Brenda M. Cobal. Attorney Mulligan brought a lawsuit against his partners. The sole asset of the business was real estate located at 3822 Bernie Avenue, Music, PA. And I'm just going to read one part of the lawsuit, which was denied. The whole lawsuit was denied, but I probably need 15 or 20 minutes to read the whole thing. Part 6A, it says, "Denied, and by way of further answer, petitioner created an impossibility of performance of maintenance by changing locks on the premises, preventing respondents from entering the premises, and threatening bodily harm to the respondents. Petitioner continues to harass respondent Donald Fredrickson Jr. by lewd gestures and public and baseless threats of criminal prosecution." Now, this is a man who says he has character. What I just read, that doesn't sound like a man that has character. Sounds like the man should be disbarred and not allowed to practice law in this state anymore. And definitely shouldn't be our mayor, because our mayor has this city going in the right direction. 300 Blocker Penn Avenue is starting to begin to look like downtown when I was a kid. Small businesses there, and it's happening all over the city. So I don't think this mayor's, this person's qualified to be mayor. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Bob Wallace, Scranton. Just to reiterate a little, Les just said, I don't believe the mayor should even share the stage with Mulligan. He took money illegally. He's a lawyer. You should have known better, that you don't take insurance when you're not on the payroll. It's against the law. It's illegal. I don't think the mayor should even waste his time sitting on the stage. I've already sent a letter, as you all know, to the Attorney General requesting an investigation into it. It's a law. The law's for everyone, including Mr. Mulligan. And when you break it, you pay the price. We all know that. I know that. I've gone through it around here, right, wrong, or indifferent. So I don't think he should even stand up there with a halo on and say he's doing something for the city, or he's going to do something better, when all he was was a taker and not a giver. And if he can't be truthful and honest in the administration running this city, representing all the people, he don't belong there. And I personally don't think, I would share the stage with him, and I don't think anybody else should. He doesn't belong there. He knew better, and he should have known better if he didn't know better. Hopefully, the AG will do something, step up to the plate once, and do something about it and save the city from a possible catastrophe, from somebody that stole from us. The sewer authority's still active. Mr. Gahan, you're the one guy who yells about transparency. I see it in my sleep anymore. Seems everywhere I go, I see it as transparency. But I haven't seen you take issue with Mr. Mulligan. Yet you argue about the sewer authority, what the mayor did. The mayor stood on a stage. He was accountable to each and every one of you. You're the only one that came up, and you tried to bully him. But he was there for everybody. I haven't seen any of you guys stand out there all by yourselves and take criticism or take answers and questions, as the mayor did. And I think it's all wrong that you keep coming out and challenging transparency when you signed a recovery plan. Now, you're all same as the fox in the hen house, same group. So, you know, I think you've got to be marginal where you're going. Point blame where blame belongs. You haven't said a word about Mulligan, yet you let something else go on. Taxes on the... Taxes on them all. Nobody stood here and said, "Geez, let's go get that reassessed." You haven't even told us where our parking spaces are, the 500 spaces we're supposed to have, that we paid millions of dollars of our money to do it. Your transparency, I haven't heard you say anything about that, because it's political. So if you're going to run a city here, and stand out and argue about transparency and credibility and integrity, do something about it, than just barking about it. You know, I'm a guy that likes to see action. I don't like talkers. And I don't like nonsense where people just don't take responsibility. Find out what the mall did with our money, and why we paid $10 to park on St. Patrick's Day and our parking spaces. And we should have premiered parking spaces for the residents, or the businesses in the City of Scranton people who pay taxes. Take care of that and your transparency. Give us an answer. Rope it off. Tell us what we own. The other part is, I got to commend the mayor. I tried to do that when you shut the mic off on me a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Wexler. And I was, I thought it was a displeasure with it, because I was talking about something great for the city. I was with the president last week, when he stood on the stage and thanked Lorraine Cummings, our commissioner, and said how he loves the City of Scranton. That's from the President of the United States. And what we showed him here, you guys didn't show him, I did, and so did a lot of other people. I opened up a house for him, a headquarters. I brought him to Scranton with trailers and advertisement. But he gave us credibility nationally. And our mayor stood out front of the courthouse. And Mr. Evans, you were there. You saw what the mayor did. He's the only mayor in the country that gave the city key, the key to the city, to the American Towman Spirit Ride, out of every city that this coffin, or the Spirit Ride, which is toward the moveover law, went nationally. Thousands of places this has gone through with towing companies, first responders. We were honored to be able to have it done here in Scranton, where I requested it be brought, not to my place of business. I wanted it in my city. I wanted it downtown, because of the respect I have for my city. And for this mayor, out of this whole country, showed credibility and integrity far beyond anybody that's out there. And the criticism he's getting in a lot of areas is all wrong, because everybody here was all part of where the city is today. The school district and everywhere else that has put City of Scranton in the hole again. And it's going to head there, because they're going to break us, because nobody's taken an issue. But this mayor at least stood before us, and took the criticism, and opened the door to them. Let somebody else do that. Thank you.
Lee Morgan?
Good evening, Council. Lee Morgan. You know, I appreciate everybody's opinion when they come here to the podium, because they're speaking their mind. And I think that's important, to be able to voice your opinions, especially to your government. But, you know, with where the city is after 25 years in distress, and the city being in worse shape than it was when it began, and, you know, with the rulings that are going to come, I mean, I think that Judge Gibbons is just looking for wiggle room and trying to give the city a little spacing, hoping that the higher court will rule, not just in the city's favor, but to try to help all the cities across the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that find themselves in the same financial shape the city's in, because there's been a total lack of political leadership in this country for decades. And, you know, the only thing that's going to really save this city, in my opinion, and I appreciate people when they run for office, but too often, people run for office and really they've never attended a public meeting. They don't know how to do research and develop ideas on their own. And it's like, they're being led down the road, holding somebody's hand, because, you know, in most instances, grant money, whether it's federal, state, or state, has been determined where it's going to be spent at the inception of the legislation. I think what really needs to happen in the city is, something needs to go on the ballot to give the residents the opportunity to dissolve Scranton's city government, and the Scranton School District's government. Because after 25 years of failed leadership, and I'm not just saying that, Mr. Wexler, because of your comment about what Attorney Menora told you about the law, because, I mean, if you were to read the law, words and laws have meaning, and maybe your solicitor could explain that to you. But the, but the financial harm that's been done to the residents of this city is just mind-boggling. And for the people at home, you know, you've got senior citizens living on almost nothing. But to be honest with you, that's their fault. Because for 50 or 60 years, the government, the people and the citizens in this country have known that the US government was looting their social security funds, and putting IOUs in that fund in place of their cash reserves. And for so long, citizens have just stood idly by, fearful of their own government. Mr. Wallace asked a very legitimate question here tonight. Where are our 500 parking spaces? But you know something? I remember when we were building one of the garages downtown, and people were bragging about the crane on our skyline. But the residents, they've received nothing for all the work that's been done in this city, because it's all been sold off. And the people who took it don't even pay taxes. And the revenue that should be coming into the city, whether it's the parking meters or the fines, parking fines, that's going to somebody else, too. And the $15 fee per parking spot doesn't exist anymore. So all that's happened in the city is, that more and more of the burden of government has fallen on the people who have nothing left. And the people who were their representatives to protect their interest, you're seated before me. And your performance? Well, to be honest with you, hm, I don't have words to convey your performance, because they, I don't think they've created that word yet, to be quite honest. And what the city really needs are massive, and I mean massive, cuts to the budget. Massive. 30% or 40% cuts to the budget. Not make-believe, but reality. The wage tax has to go to zero, not 2.4, but to zero, to bring people into this city willing to buy property and give it a shot. And the downtown? Well, some people might conduct business in their home, but to be honest with you, downtowns were designed to conduct business, but we're turning into neighborhoods. And when people start talking about jobs and development, where? Where do we have a business park in this city that's vibrant? And why don't we? Because you gentlemen did such a stellar job. We need to dissolve this government. We need a government by the people and for the people. Thank you.
Ron Elman?
Good evening, Council. This week, a tree fell on my house. My refrigerator quit, and my oven, my furnace wouldn't go out in the cold weather. The only reason that I mentioned this, these could be catastrophes to some of the people in this city when these things happen. There's more than just, you people just think of taxes and reassessment and so on. There's all these other expenses. And I know some of you have spoken to some people that just couldn't afford a paid-for house anymore when one of the mates died, because I've run into it two, three times. And that's, that's a great sadness. About the reassessment, of course, everybody knows I'm against it, but if the, our next mayor, the incoming mayor, whoever, whichever it is, if he could get to talk to Mrs. Cummings and Jerry and Mr. O'Malley, and come to some kind of conclusion what to do about the City of Scranton, our taxes, we couldn't afford no more. And taxes aren't going to go down. I don't care who's in office. Taxes aren't going to go down in this city. We've got a runaway school board that's leaderless. It's a luxury that a big city couldn't afford. I've asked the people, "Who the hell ever heard of a school board in such debt as this?" And they've hired 16, 17 new teachers. You know, more benefits. They're just completely out of control. But as I was saying, what, what if, if something could be done about keeping the, the level of taxes in Scranton for a period of time? And the county is where most of the newer buildings and properties are over the years. This city's full of 100-year-old houses, hundreds of them, probably thousands of them. The house on each side of me was there before 1912. I got a map of the neighborhood from my survey years ago. That's how I just happened to know that. It even showed the little outhouses behind them on the map I got downtown. And if anybody wants to know about their property, those people just bend over backwards to help you. I don't know if any of y'all have ever had to go in there, the old gas company, but I don't know how to use a computer or nothing. I had two different people just doing everything for me a couple of years ago. About the reassessment, $13 million, $15 million? That's ridiculous. They could hire 300 unemployed people. This isn't, doesn't take any skill to measure a house. I helped the girl that came to my house years ago. They could hire 300 people at $100 a day. That's $150,000 a week. I have no idea how long it would take. If it took 12 weeks, what's that, $1,800,000? If it took 20 weeks, you're talking about $3 million. Why should it take 300 people measuring houses all over the county? A prolonged time. Besides that, Mr. Caderro, Mr. Muncheck had records. I don't know whatever happened to them. They had a secretary put everything on a disk from the survey they took, from as much as they got years ago. But it's just an idea that if this administration gets involved, the same people did the sewer authority work, will, will end up with our $13, $15 million, and they probably still won't get the job finished. Thank you.
Glennis Johns?
So, a lot of people brought up a lot of important things that are happening in the city. One thing that's really striking to me is the school district. I'm a product of the school district. I've seen a lot of things that had happened. I've also worked in school districts in other cities. And just to know that we're in this much debt, and there's not that many resources, and if there are resources, they're only going to certain schools, I think we need to do something about that. There's old resources there. We're in 2017. We could use different technologies that will ultimately save us money and facilitate education for these students. I feel like leaving the Scranton School District, I had to teach myself a lot when I got to college. And I feel like I've done a lot to further my education, and I just wish that there was teachers that wanted to be there, especially to help children of color. I feel like we are always marginalized in the city. And it's really hurtful, because I want to be there for those students, and I think we don't have enough representation in the school. I think we need to do more recruiting for right teachers. I think we need to get ourselves out of debt properly, and I don't think that we're doing that. The fact that the school's in more debt than some of the New York City School District is out of control. But to put that aside, like I said the other few times I was here, I really want to do a lot to bring remembrance and recognition to some of the prominent members of color of the city from the past. And I would really like to see historical markers placed for some of these people, and I wrote a proposal for you guys regarding that. Two figures, for example, that I would like to start with, if the city can sponsor that to happen, would be George W. Brown, who was a prominent business owner in the early 1900s, as well as another man named Thomas H. Hughes. He was one of the first, well, he was the first African-American to move in the east side on 900 block of Prescott Avenue. And he pretty much opened the way for there to be integration in housing, because before that, African-Americans can only live in one part of the city. So I think that we need to show the city that we do care about these people who actually made an impact. You know, we have all these, these placards and different, remembrance of different people for different reasons, and I think it's time that we start to see more representation of other people. Native Americans, the Indian community, the Black community, the Hispanic community. So I kind of want to encourage that. So, if, can I give you guys these papers? This is just like a draft of a proposal that I'm working on. The Pennsylvania History and Museum Commission, they're the ones that go about making the placards. So they have a deadline of December 1st, but if that's not possible, then I really want to work for next year, especially when you guys are redoing the budget, because it is pricey, and I would like to be sponsored for this project, so I'll just give you guys. So I have some information about these people.
Thanks.
And also in the back of this, there is, if you look on the last sheet I gave you guys, I attached a clipping from a newspaper, and this article is from 1905. And this is at the corner of Cliff Avenue, Cliff, Lackawanna Avenue and Cliff Street. And right now, that's where the Colts bus station is, but this is actually George W. Brown's five, five-story brick building. That was his warehouse, and he was grossing in today's money about $1.1 million a year. He was one of the most wealthiest business owners in the northeast Pennsylvania region. And I think there needs to be a marking there of what his business used to be. I'm still trying to figure out when his building was actually torn down, but I want to guess in maybe the 1940s. But, like I said, I think it's time that these people become recognized in the city. He did so much for this community, and it's like sad for me to see that someone got lost as the city grew, and that we're not, we're not recognizing this person. And I feel like that can be an idol for somebody. He's become an idol of mine. So I just want to work to getting more people of color recognized, more people of color to be involved in the community. Like I said before, there's also not a lot of people that participate in city council or the government that's my age. And seeing all the things that's happening now, I think it's more than necessary, seeing what the mayor is not doing for us is terrible, and seeing that we're not really being encouraged to go out into the world. And also, when you come back here, there's no jobs. I have two degrees, and I cannot find a job here. And honestly, I don't know if I want to say it's because of my color, or I'm overqualified, or I'm a woman of color. But I've done a lot of work trying to find a job in this local area, and it's very hard. But I'm not going to, you know, bring that into this discussion, but I'm just saying, like a few people said, Lee Morgan, he said, "There's not really jobs here for people." like a few people said, Lee Morgan, he said, "There's not really jobs here for people." Those jobs are from big corporations that stay for a couple of years, but that, to me, is not a career job. And I think if you're, I think if we have these students and we do something to like advocate education and have a place for them to come back and actually contribute to this community, it could also make it better. So those are just some ideas that I have, and I wanted to share with you all. So, thank you.
Glennis, before you leave, actually, right now, in that area of Cliff Street, down in that area, the county actually is getting ready to build what they're going to call a Boomerang Park because of the shape of the park. So I'm thinking, actually, if it ties in, the county may be able to do something for something like this while they're developing the park. And I think it'd be a great addition, noting that historical event of someone like we're talking about. I think that may be something that maybe we could work with Mr. Hetman, who's representing county, just to let him know that you were here this evening and see if there's something we can put into the Boomerang.
Absolutely, and I would love that. I pretty much did my whole graduate studies on the history of the city, so I feel like I'm more than qualified, and I've become an expert on this area. I'm getting ready to show my thesis to the city. I'm working on that. Like I said, in this proposal, I put excerpts from my thesis on all the information on these people backing up why I think they deserve to have recognition. So, once again, thank you all for listening.
Anyone else?
I am trusting that assigning the authority to the mayor to put the, to sign the deed for that property at Linden in Wyoming is not, will remain on the table tonight. I just would like to say one thing about that. Thanks to the milling of Wyoming Avenue, I actually could, got stopped in front of St. Luke's, and there's a beautiful park right there already. It's gorgeous. I guess it's the churches. I don't know who does it and maintains it, but it's beautiful. So, I think one in that block is sufficient. Next, Wayne, do you yet have the number of billing permits that have been issued since the three-year abatement was passed?
I'll go get that for you.
Okay, thank you. And then, following up on another one, I just, Bishop Wexler, I would like to go back and clarify something. A couple of weeks ago, I asked about the, if the agreement with Steamtown 300 or Mr. Basaliga was for the 40 years of the lease. Do you remember that?
In terms of the parking?
Yeah, in terms of the, in terms of the non-compete. And whether that was, well, you know, that's why I was looking up something else, because I want to talk about the parking authority, which I think is probably a bigger disaster than the sewer authority. But it's, in going through it, it said the original was for 15 years exclusive, exclusivity? And, I went to the dentist today, excuse me. And originally, it was unspecified, but it said a much higher amount. And it said that what they got for the 4.5 million that we gave them upfront was for 22.5 years. So, I would like clarification on which it really ended up, if it was the 22.5. And then, do we have a date yet for the parking?
No. We have a tentative date, but, like I said last week, I don't want to put it out, and then it'll...
And were you able to get the number of spaces in the Electric City Garage that are, that were built in the early 90s rather than in the 50s?
No, the question that you sent to me was which garages were built.
I'm sorry?
The question you sent to me was which garages were built.
No, I asked for the number, parking spaces in that part that was...
Unless I read your email incorrectly, I didn't get that from your email.
Okay, well, I would like to know the number of those. All they have is a 685, and they're something like that.
Send it to me again with the proper question.
Yeah, no, I, okay. That's what I want, is the number that's in the section, so I can do the subtraction. Which is interesting, I mean, we gave them $4.5 million for that exclusivity for maybe 20, around 20 years, and they were able to get the entire mall for 5.5. We could have had 2,000 spaces. Anyway, back toward, also, of the, we still were obligated, I do know, this was in the contract, that 2.85 million toward the immediate repairs for the Electric City Garage. How much of that's been expended?
I don't know. I don't think any of it's been expended.
Was it put in escrow? Well, it was for immediate. I mean, that's quite a while, immediate was, to me, is like right away. So could you find that out, how much of that? And if not, where it is in our budget process? Because we do, we have committed to spending $2.85 million toward the 5.1, estimated 5.1 million in the immediate repairs to the EC garage. Back to this page. I remember being back in that governor's room right behind us here and listening to Mr. Cross and other people commit to the trust agreement for the proceeds of the sewer's assets, like immediately, if not sooner, kind of a comment. When are we going to do this right? I mean, my goodness, we had that one third-party administrator, then we came out with this. Now we're going to have to make two jobs instead of one independent worker and examination coordinator. When are we going to get down to the nitty-gritty?
Well, I expect that to be done relatively soon. And once that happens, we can start rolling the trust.
Could you define, because obviously I have a different definition of immediate, so could you...
Yeah, I know. Well, in government, soon could be a very difficult term.
Okay, and if I may, the rest I'll bring back, but I would like to point out one thing, and that is that Mayor Courtwright did have the opportunity to amend the budget when he came into office, and that was the first year that the garbage fee was changed from $178 to $300 a year. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wexler. I just have a few brief items. The first, I'm actually, we actually touched on already, I think Ms. Toner-Mott's brought it up and Bill mentioned it, that there is going to be a scheduled meeting between Arcadius and American Water Company. Date's not set yet, but once the date is, we'll pass on all the information that comes out from that meeting. Obviously, we're kind of all waiting with bated breath on that. I felt, or I was fielding some phone calls this week on the paving project for South Irving Avenue. They started the project, put up signs, and then stopped kind of like cold. And it was, you know, the residents up there, they're waiting for so long, we're kind of, we're upset. So I told them I'd find out some information. I did pass on the information I found, but I figured I'd make a more broader statement in case some people are still wondering. The paving company, there was a death in, a death in the family of one of the employees that caused their shutdown of the company. So the projects went on hold. All the projects are back up and running now. As of today, there might actually be sites, there might be equipment on the site now, I don't know. But it is scheduled to take place rather soon and get done within the next week. So that's the update on South Irving Street paving project. The only other note I have is that I have a request for replacement stop sign on the corner of Duncan and Cedar Avenue. It's a hand-painted stop sign. I don't know if anybody's ever noticed those. When stop signs go down, they get hit by a car, or whatever happens, like they get faded. Some citizens will, you know, will go up and just kind of paintbrush it in, just to have it there, whether there's children playing. And that's the case on this. It's just, there's no reflectivity to it. It's just a hand-painted sign. So if we can get that addressed and fixed soon as possible, that would be fantastic. Those are the only items I have. There's nothing in the fifth order tonight, so there's no real new business. That's all I have, Mr. Wexler.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Rogan?
Yes, also, just two very brief items. I appreciate Mr. Hetman coming and giving us the budget message from the commissioners. One thing that, and the speaker mentioned it today, regarding the city and the taxes, is that, you know, to the average taxpayer, whether it's going to the city, the county, or the school district, all they know is they're writing a check. So I am pleased to see that the county budget is not going to raise taxes. The city budget next year will not raise taxes, and we wait to see what the school district has to say, which, as anyone who reads the paper knows right now, that the school district is, of the three bodies, the one that's in the most severe financial distress, with the state possibly coming in. So I think we, moving forward, the three governing bodies need to have more cooperation, whether it's as far as purchasing goes, and I know a lot of times that can be very difficult between the taxing bodies. But especially with the school district and the city, there's an opportunity for greater cooperation. This is something that's been brought up to me a number of times, but the school district has garbage trucks. You know, they have people that are paid just to do that function. You know, again, I think the city is better at that than, you know, because we have a full force. You know, there's areas where we could help the school district and areas where the school district could help us. So I'm hoping that in the future, there can be more cooperation between the taxing bodies, especially with much of the distress currently with the school district. But that being said, I am pleased, again, regarding the county's budget message, and again, appreciate Mr. Hetman coming and keeping us informed on that end. Secondly, I know Mr. Perry mentioned this during announcements, but I just want to comment. The fundraiser for Chris Hallack, Chris is a friend of mine, and he is one of the best police officers the city of Scranton has. As Councilman Perry mentioned, he has a newborn son just recently and was diagnosed with a very rare form of leukemia. So he's in our prayers and hope to see everyone at the fundraiser on the 18th for Chris. Just want to mention that. He's such a great guy, and he's always sending me ideas about the city, how to make the city better. He's truly what's great about our city and our city's police department. So we hope to see him back, bouncing back from this and back at work soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan. Mr. Evans?
Thank you. First, a reminder that ECTV will be televising the mayoral and city council debates on Channel 19. That's all I'm going to say about that issue, because I really don't think this is the forum for political comments. Tonight, I'm going to talk about a subject that is of special interest to me, and it, no, it's not reassessment. Historic preservation and the future of cities, and why we may be, just may be, on the cusp of something truly amazing, but only we make the right decisions on a going-forward basis. As a former president of the Architectural Heritage Association, as well as a former member of the HARP, which is the Historic Architectural Review Board, and also a former City Planning Commission member for almost a decade, preservation and planning have always intersected for me. So what I want to talk about tonight is the return of the city. City living, believe it or not, is making a comeback. I think we've seen some of that for ourselves with the growth of residential living downtown. 80% of Americans live in cities and urban areas, and that number is increasing. According to the last census, the urban population grew at 12% between 2000 and 2010. In fact, since 2000, home prices in city centers have outperformed those in the suburbs by 50%. This dynamic spurred a Time Magazine headline in April of 2014. It read, "The new American dream is living in the city, not owning a house in the suburbs." So even while suburban sprawl continued to proliferate, many Americans began to feel that something was missing in the name of 20th century convenience. Building suburban neighborhoods structured around cars rather than people, they found they were losing many aspects of the meaning of place that comprised the building blocks that make up a community. Suburbia's complete dependence on the automobile ends up costing families more money in the form of multiple cars, more insurance, gas, and even healthcare. The former president of the National Trust, Richard Moe, called the suburbs "the most expensive, resource-intensive, land-gobbling, polluting way of living ever built." So as I mentioned earlier, in the beginning of the 21st century, the comeback for cities began. In the book, The Great Inversion in the Future of the American City, the author wrote that "we are living in a moment in which the massive outward migration of the affluent that characterized the second half of the 20th century is coming to an end." And among the driving forces behind this change and inward migration back to cities are those born between 1980 and 1987, also known as millennials. A Nielsen report found that 62% of millennials wanted to live in an urban, mixed-use environment alongside shops, restaurants, and offices. In fact, further research suggests that a full 85% of this group prefer city living to life in the suburbs. And I'm not even including the empty nesters, many who are now taking the leap to city life and trading their lawn mowers and snow blowers for an easier and far more interesting way of urban life. Young professionals and millennials, unlike their parents, who seem to have calculated their worth in terms of how much square feet their house was, are more interested in the amenities of the city itself, great public spaces, walkability, diverse people, and more activities. The reason I talk about subjects like this is because this could be our future. We need to do a lot more things right, but this is there for the taking. We need to embrace it. Because a vital and relevant downtown neighborhood will increase and will bring an increased tax base, a reimagined prosperity, small businesses, and yes, jobs. And that means stability at the government level, as well as additional resources to draw from to help support our neighborhoods. In the movie, The Field of Dreams, the theme is simple. If you build it, they will come. We've already built it. We already have what others don't have. But we need to be smart, innovative, and concerned caretakers of what we do have and its true potential. So how does historic preservation enter into this conversation? Because it starts with what I would call the quality of place. This is the quality of the buildings, architecture, and the streets that surround us. People want to live and work where that exists. Quality like the Scranton Cultural Center, the Albright Library, the Radisson and Lackawanna, the Scranton Life Building, the Scranton Electric Building, the Connell Building, the Brooks Building, City Hall, the courthouse, the 300th Block of Penn Avenue, and on and on. Our downtown is not measured with nondescript strip malls and cookie cutter franchises, but with history and architecture and quality of place. So from time to time, I'll be revisiting this topic to be, to more fully explore the link and with cities and the downtown, walkability, and of course, historic preservation. In the meantime, we, some city officials and government officials, developers, residents, artists, property owners, the we that believes in Scranton, we have to step up and be the advocates for what is right in this city. For too long, we have let others tell us who and what we are. It's time for us to tell a different story. So that's all I have on that subject tonight. Finally, I'd like to thank, on reassessment, because I can't let a night go by and I don't talk about reassessment, I'd like to thank Mr. Cross from PEL, as well as the League of Women Voters, for their unbiased presentation on reassessment. And one more thing, the election is less than three weeks away. Please vote yes for reassessment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Gahan?
Yes, thank you. Just a few items. First of all, I want to apologize for being absent last week. I was ill, and I still can't seem to shake this cold. I want to say something about the purpose of these council meetings after listening to some speakers tonight. It's my view that the purpose of these meetings is to conduct city business, not engage in who people want to win for the office of mayor, throwing out various allegations about different candidates. I think that we need to get these meetings in order over the next few weeks. Otherwise, the intent of council meetings, which is, the purpose is to conduct city business, it will continue to deteriorate, in my opinion. Second thing I'd like to mention, this past Saturday, I had the opportunity to call a bingo game at the Westside Senior Center. And I approached a table of elderly women, and we started to have a conversation, and almost all of the women at the table lived, currently live at the Greenridge Senior Apartments off of Dixon Avenue. And if you remember, this subject has come up here more than once with one speaker who was very passionate about some of the perceived injustices that are taking place at this complex. And I had almost all of the people sitting at this table tell me some pretty horrifying things that are going on down, apparently going down, at this senior... going on down, apparently going down at this senior center, at the senior apartments. One of them is that there is apparently a $15 charge on elderly people if they are located next to the elevator. The elevator was down for a long time, so that affected many of the elderly there and the people who were handicapped. One of the major things that these, these women were telling me is that their rents continue to rise. When this was built back in 2012, and I want to read an excerpt from an article, March 21st article from the Scranton Times, "The city of Scranton, Lackawanna County, and the School District was considering a tax abatement for the 121-unit senior citizen apartment building that was going to be built at a former masonry block plant in the Green Ridge section off of Dixon Avenue." So this company, which is from Williamsville, New York, was seeking a tax abatement. They were specifically seeking ALERTA, which gives a one-year tax abatement for every $1 million invested in improvements to a property for up to 10 years. And I believe they eventually got a 10-year tax abatement. Christopher Trivissani, the Director of Development for Affordable Senior Housing Opportunities of New York Incorporated, a for-profit company, requested ALERTA from Scranton City Council in March of 2012. And he said, "With construction estimated to cost $10 million to $15 million, ALERTA would pay for the firm's mortgage and thus allow rents of $700 to $800 a month." He also went on to say, according to this article, that rents could be maintained as affordable, so affordable senior housing could be offered to the citizens of Scranton and the county. Well, apparently, from what these elderly women told me, the rents are now in the area of $1,100, $1,200, and $1,300 a month. I don't have to tell anybody in the room tonight or in the city of Scranton that our senior citizens are on a fixed income. And these women that I spoke to sold their homes in the city to move into this apartment complex because they were promised affordable housing. So needless to say, we went on to, I won't go into everything, that we went on to discuss a lot of other things that are going on down there. They are very afraid of speaking out. There have been a mass exodus of people who have left the complex, apparently. The problem is, there are those who are left behind who cannot leave because they cannot find any place else to go. And many of them don't have family left in the city. This has kept me up now for the last couple of nights, thinking about all of these people that I met and all of their stories. So I did bring this up in, in our caucus in the back room. And I think whether this is an issue where we have the authority to solve this problem at this point doesn't even matter to me. Something has got to be done here. I don't know what, whether it's bringing this company back in and taking away the tax abatement. I don't even know how that works. I've had discussions with Solicitor Menora in the past about that, but something has to be done here. The woman that came and spoke a few, maybe a month or two ago, she's very passionate, she was very passionate about the cause. I've had more than one conversation with her. But now she got kicked out of the apartment complex because she was speaking up. The people that are left there are afraid to speak up. So they need somebody. They've gone to other avenues, and it hasn't worked out. So I have asked Solicitor Menora to investigate every possible avenue to see if this council can do anything to help these people. I honestly thought of my own grandparents, if they were told that they could move into this apartment complex and pay $700 or $800 a month and be able to afford it, and then five years later, you're paying nearly $1,300. It's unacceptable. And this is a for-profit company. So something has to be done. Just a few more things. I asked for an update from the mayor today, the mayor's secretary, actually, on the lease agreement between the city and the Civil War GAR museum down in the basement. Haven't heard back yet, but we're hopeful that we're going to get that on the agenda before November. I also had the opportunity to take a ride out to the 1800 block of Shimf Court, where there were several residents in South Scranton who had a number of different complaints. There's issues with the court actually crumbling and falling apart. It was last paved in 1975, so I would ask that we request that it be put on the next paving list, if we could send correspondence to OECD, because I do believe that that is in a low to moderate income area. There were mounds of dirt that were on the court, and there are two houses where the weeds are overgrown. I actually couldn't even see the, how to get into the house. The weeds were so high and the grass was so high, you couldn't even see the front door. We did contact the DPW, and I do have to say, they responded very quickly, and the residents were thrilled with that. So in the meantime, they did go out and they patched some of the court. So in the interim, I think that'll take care of some of the issues. One property owner was cited and came out and cleaned up one of the properties. The other two properties at 1826 Cedar Avenue, and I'm mentioning this because there were some people that couldn't be at the meeting that we had. There are two properties on this parcel. Both are condemned. You can see the one when you're coming by the Scranton Su, or the Pennsylvania American Water, rather, on Cedar Avenue. Both of those properties are condemned. A bank from Delaware acquired them in August. Mr. Hinton informed us that a notice of demolition has been sent, and the bank has 20 days to appeal. And I did, you know, recommend to Mr. Hinton that the bank be notified that in the interim, they need to clean the property up, because it is a disgrace. 1342 Bryn Mawr Street in West Scranton, I was approached by several residents in that area about a property where there is illegal dumping going on. The property, we found out, is owned by the Lackawanna County Land Bank. So we did contact Ralph Pappas from the county, and he's going to take care of that issue. The last thing I have tonight is my concern over the Act 511 challenge in court, and the effect that that may have on the city's plan to exit Act 47 distressed status. You know, the mayor has been touting the last few months that the city of Scranton is possibly going to exit Act 47. And I hate to rain on his parade and everybody else's parade. But we really only have two options, according to the legislation that was passed by the state. We either exit Act 47, taking advantage of the three-year timeline that we have that takes us to 2021. We disincorporate as a municipality, which doesn't apply to us, or we enter receivership. So there's really only two options. This lawsuit is particularly concerning, and I did ask the Pennsylvania Economy League what their opinion on, on this was, and if they are considering any alternate projections to the budget. And Mr. Cross, I'd like to thank him. He provided me with a lengthy response. Not going to read the whole thing, but to summarize, he basically said that the main question is to be decided by Commonwealth Court and the jurisdiction that decides the matters of municipal law and which law controls what's subject. He doesn't think that the case is going to be settled soon, and he thinks the Commonwealth is going to provide legal support to the city litigators on the side of home rule, because there's a question of which is superior, state law and home rule. And I think that's already been decided. The state law supersedes that. He said he doesn't foresee an impact on the city's budget in the near term, as the judge did not grant the request to escrow tax dollars for 2017 or prior years. Regarding the case overall, he says that he has not spoken with legal experts that agree with the plaintiff's argument, and that the city is not alone in Pennsylvania home rule municipalities that would be affected if the home rule exception is not upheld. So basically, it's, it's a wait and see. But these things are concerning if we're looking at the upcoming budget. The rental registration challenge, the trash fee challenge, and I'm also really concerned about the challenge in court regarding the Municipal Authorities Act, on whether or not it's even legal to use the proceeds of the Scranton Sewer Authority for anything other than its stated function. That question has still not been answered yet. Recently, and I think it was mentioned tonight, the mayor-elect of Dunmore, Tim Burke, along with several other council members, said that they would not spend a dime of the proceeds until that lawsuit is resolved. I would agree with them. And that's one of the reasons that I voted against spending the sewer proceeds when that came up before us. And I don't think we should really do anything further until these issues are resolved. And that's all I have this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gahan. I share your concerns regarding the political comments made at the podium. Unfortunately, a few years ago, it was decided that that type of speech is allowed at council. I don't care for it. There's a lot of things said at that podium that I would not like to have said here, or that are said in poor taste, or aren't accurate. But unfortunately, for the next few weeks, we're going to have to listen to that conversation. I don't think it's, it's worth the turmoil arguing with speakers when, in a few five minutes, they're, they're complete. So I won't be here next year, so maybe the next council president will want to have that fight. But I, I don't think it's, it's worth the aggravation of, of a battle at the podium when it's been decided that that speech can be used. In regards to Dunmore's decision not to spend the sewer proceeds, Dunmore has, has the luxury that we don't have. They weren't facing Act 47. They weren't facing a problem with excessive bond payments. I wish we had the luxury also not to spend that money. But unfortunately, in order to move the city ahead and keep our taxes under control, we did have to spend that money. I also have spoken to Mr. Cross regarding the Act 511. I've also spoken to Business Administrator Bozoni. And really, right now, we have to stay on the course that we're at. We can't plan for a failure. Otherwise, we would have to increase property tax. We hear talks about cutting 30% of the budget. In reality, where do you cut 30% of the budget? Where do you cut it? We barely have enough policemen. We barely have enough firemen. We need more DPW workers, not less. We need more staff in this building. There's no way to cut the budget 30%. And then the next comment is, we're going to eliminate the wage tax. Well, how can you cut 30% of the budget and eliminate the wage tax? Like I said, comments are made at that podium, and, and everybody has a right to speak, but we have to get real here. There's no way to cut 30% of the city's budget. And there's no way to eliminate the wage tax. There is no way to do that. We have to get tax revenue in here to pay our bills. Do we want to raise taxes? No. Do we have to be more efficient with what we collect? Yes. Can we try to lower fees where we can? Yes. But everybody wants firemen. Everybody wants policemen. Everybody wants their garbage picked up. The staff that we have is what we need. And it's, it's irresponsible to say to cut it 30% and eliminate the wage tax. Another matter that we've been working on here, last, a few weeks ago, representatives from the Veterans Committee came here to see if we could do some work on the OECD grant for their plans for the Veterans Memorial. Tom Priambo and Linda Ably from OECD, they have contacted HUD. They're in the process of asking them what procedures we can do. So that, that's still an active matter to see if we can get these guys some money. And really, the only thing I had planned to talk about tonight was some good news from Comcast, but things, things change. I have an announcement that Comcast provided to me. Comcast announced that it has now activated 154 Xfinity Wi-Fi outdoor hotspots in Scranton, part of an ongoing expansion of Wi-Fi network in its Keystone region that includes more than 4,700 hotspots throughout the area. Right now, these 154 hotspots have been, are in 23 retail locations along Main Avenue, including the Wells Fargo, Family Dollar, Johnson College, Johnny's Car Wash, and various medical and dental offices and barber shops. There are 13 hotspots along Scranton-Carbondale Highway, including near Viewmont Mall, Fashion Mall Sheets, Sinewal Plaza 2, Pep Boys All Day, Circle Drive-In, and numerous restaurants. There's also hotspots along South Main Avenue in West Scranton, including the post office, Sunoco, Walgreens, CVS, and various hair salons, churches, and markets. The interesting thing with this is if you're an Xfinity Wi-Fi customer, you're able to use these hotspots just as you would, as you would at your home. Most Xfinity customers can access Wi-Fi hotspots by selecting Xfinity Wi-Fi from the list of available networks on their laptops or mobile devices and entering their Comcast username and password. That would be at no additional cost. So as, as Mr. Evans talked about, our downtown changing, our whole area is changing. And especially the past couple of years, this council and the administration, we've made several steps to make Scranton a more technological city, more friendly to walking, and more friendly to the new technologies that are out there. Not that old guys like I use it, but young people live on their, live on their cellphones. And we need to make Scranton a more receptive city to that progress. And that's all I have.
5B, no business at this time. Sixth order, 6A, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 200, 2017, appointment of Reverend Rebecca A. Barnes, 801 Wheeler Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, as a member of the Human Relations Commission, effective October 3, 2017. Reverend Rebecca A. Barnes will be replacing Robert Johns, who resigned on September 7, 2017. Reverend Barnes will fill the unexpired term of Robert Johns, which is scheduled to expire on August 24, 2018.
As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 201, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to enter into a loan-to-grant agreement and make a loan grant from the city of Scranton Business and Industry Loan Grant Program for project number as noted in an amount not to exceed $25,000 to the Bhutnies Cultural Foundation of Scranton Association to assist an eligible project.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of Item 7D.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Epstein.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 202, 2017, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to escuten enter into an agreement for the collective bargaining agreement by and between the city of Scranton, NDC, ABM, and Teamsters Local 229, in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement with an effective date of January 1, 2017, and ratified by the membership.
As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of Item 7C.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.